Are there any special amendments, revisions, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number two, I make motion to approve the consent agenda correspondence.
The move by Councilor Rudolph, seconded by Councilor Greger, that will be given to item two, the consent agenda and correspondence. Are there any items on the consent agenda, any members wish to discuss? Councilor Greger.
Item.
Aye. Councilor Shu.
B.
B as in going?
B as in going.
Any others? Same? Okay, in that case, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Uh, your response?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Both? Okay, Councilor Greger, item A.
Uh, this is a communication from Prime Director, so it's to be our members of the special council. It was in the pre-council session, uh, which is going to be set up as, uh, to clarify that it's our moral field property. Uh, we move to a future date. I've had a conversation with President David Moran regarding this matter. It would be currently looking at a date for Monday, September nineteenth, which do, uh, now look at this, um, this issue here. But also all things, uh, involving morally field, uh, replacement properties. Uh, so we're looking at a full, a special, um, public hearing, just dealing with everything morally field. Uh, to be scheduled for Monday, September nineteenth.
It's a special council meeting?
Council meeting.
Yes. It's been moved by Councilor, uh, Councilor Greger, seconded by Councilor Shu, that we file that communication and select as a future date for a council, you know, special council meeting, discuss all things related to moral field for September nineteenth?
Monday.
Monday, September nineteenth, uh, at a time to determine whether we can ask for it. So, um, is there any discussion on that motion? Councilor Greger.
Yeah, uh, also, um, the move to approve, yes. Oh, the, uh...
I, I, I just, just go for that right now.
Uh, this is a courier from Bianca Polycastle, it's September seventh. As the, the file and, uh, continued, it'd be a press after the nineteenth September session.
You want? I'm sorry, I, I don't have that in front of me. Just do you, one more time, say what that was?
This is a, uh, letter from, uh, Bank Department, like that.
Send your package.
Send a packet.
Underneath some stuff, probably.
Yep. It's going to be added in, uh, the address of September nineteenth, uh, council meeting.
Okay, alright, so, so let's...
That's supposed to introduce?
Okay, uh, that was only introduced later on. We, we might, we might as well do it now, so, uh, let's, let's back up for a second. Um, it's been moved by Councilor Greger, seconded by Councilor Shu, that, uh, amend the agenda for the purpose of we file that communication.
No, you get a motion before the board on a special meeting. So you have a vote on that. And then you can make the motion to add the...
Okay. So, it's, it's before us, motion to set a spec- a special council meeting on September nineteenth to discuss all matters related to the moral field situation. Um, is there any discussion about that motion? Call, call over that, please.
Councilor Vasquez, Councilor...
Let me in. Everybody gonna be invited?
Yeah, so, so...
No, I mean, like...
So...
Everybody.
This is in response to a letter from a solicitor saying that he and, and, uh, Director Polycastle could not get together to get here this night, ask nothing, push back to the next meeting. Rather than push back to the next meeting and be able to address everything at once and not have to rush through it because we had, well, license commercial and other stuff afterwards. The suggestion worked out between the Councilor and, and Councilor Greger was that, and we have a special meeting.
Okay.
So to answer your question, yes, everything that would have transpired on the twenty-first, we've now pushed out coming into the night. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
In that case, is there any other discussion about that? Call, call over that, please.
President Moran, uh, President Mercer.
Yes.
Councilor Rudolph.
Yes.
Councilor DeRosa.
Yes.
Councilor Greger.
Yes.
Councilor Shu.
Yes.
Councilor Kobyak.
Yes.
Councilor Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilor Wildery.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
So it's, but it's now been moved by Councilor, uh, Greger, seconded by Councilor Shu, that we amend the agenda for the purpose of allowing the introduction of a letter. Is there any discussion on amending the agenda? All who's in favor of amendment of the agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilor Greger, you wanted to file a communication?
Yes, uh, so this, this is a communication, day is September seventh, two thousand twenty-two, uh, from the Plan Director, Bianca Polycastle, addressing the, uh, council. I'd like to, uh, to be proud and put on the agenda for, to pull September nineteenth council meeting.
It's the move by Councilor, uh, Greger, seconded by Councilor Shu, that a letter from the Director of Bianca Polycastle, I don't know if it's because, not to speak on the responding, but regarding the response to the alternative locations for moral field in the fifth district, and a communication from, uh, to, to also approve, she's...
Communication, um, is that related to that?
No, that's a separate, that's a separate communication.
So the motion is, is to file a communication from Director of Planning regarding alternative locations for moral field. All in favor of file?
Aye.
Opposed? Are we good, Councilor Greger?
Yes.
In which case, we are now to be, uh, Councilor Shu.
Yeah, I, um, I just wanted to express my gratitude to Chief Goncalves, to the superintendent, to the school committee, to everyone who worked diligently overtime to make sure winters was open this week. It's a really exciting time for that district, for Pawtucket. It was quite an interesting couple of weeks, but people pulled together and, um, I, I just wanna say thank you.
And Councilor DeRosa, you had, you had my thought?
I also just wanted to express how happy I am about winters. I did wanna say one thing. There was a lot of finger pointing that I wished would take place because this was a project that we couldn't expect perfection. We had to expect for things to come up. Um, so I, I just wanted to say that I wish I could see us, um, display more unity and teamwork. I didn't like to see the public finger pointing of whose fault or what fault it is. I think it should have been a time for us to just come together because there was a crisis and, um, and because we're, it's such a big project, um, sometimes we expect things to be open, you know, tomorrow at eight and that's not, you know, how it is, um, so I just wanted to put that out, that I, I, I didn't like that part of it, but I do like the fact that we, the kids got a brand new school. Um, I wanted to make a suggestion. I know that they was talking about the elected officials coming in for our site. I wanted to suggest that we do that when the kids are coming to school in the morning so we could shake their hands and say hi and welcome, welcome them in, whatever, I don't know, everybody's time. Trust me, it's gonna be hard for me to stay out of work to get it done, but I would love for it to be at that time.
So I, I, I know the school department is trying to coordinate a walkthrough and show pass that along to the young recruits, okay? Anything else on the consent agenda? Uh, item three.
I can talk, uh, four and five, we have Mr. Salas, we have Mr. Keel, you want to?
Sure.
I'll make, I'll second the motion.
If the move by Councilor, Councilor Rudolph, seconded by Councilor Wildery, that we amend the agenda, we can take items four and three out of four, four or five out of order ahead of item three. Is there any discussion on amending the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
In that case, item four, Councilor Wildery.
The Finance Committee returns the following contract with the recommendation for ratification. Employ, employment agreement between Pawtucket Water Supply Board and Russell L. Who, Jr., PE, Assistant Chief Engineer. I call for approval on a roll called book.
Same.
The move by Councilor, uh, Wildery, seconded by Councilor Rudolph, that employment agreement between Pawtucket Water Supply Board and Russell L. Who, Jr., PE, Assistant Chief Engineer, be approved, be ratified on a roll called book. Is there any discussion on this? Call, call over.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Councilor Rudolph.
Yes.
Councilor DeRosa.
Yes.
Councilor Greger.
Yes.
Councilor Shu.
Yes.
Councilor Kobyak.
Yes.
Councilor Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilor Wildery.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Uh, number five is the Finance Committee returns the following collective bargaining agreement with the recommendation for ratification. Collective bargaining agreement by, in, between the Teamsters Local Pipe, uh, two fifty-one and Pawtucket Water Supply Board for the period of July first, two thousand twenty, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Call, call over, call, call, call.
The move by Councilor, uh, DeRosa, seconded by Councilor Rudolph, that a collective bargaining agreement by in between the Teamsters Local two fifty-one and Pawtucket Water Supply Board for period of July one, two thousand twenty, to July to June thirty, two thousand twenty-three, be approved. Is there any discussion on, Councilor Greger?
Uh, just like, so this is retroactive to, uh, July first, two thousand twenty?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. Yes.
Any further discussion?
And if I may, they actually, there was a good negotiation because in the last year, they actually, they had co-share, uh, payment, uh, max, with, with the setting. And sometimes it's very difficult to do when you don't have that status, so, uh, it was a good negotiation by the team and, uh, I always appreciate it and thank you all, um...
And just, you know, Councilor, that's frequently the way it works, that it takes so long to negotiate the contracts, whether it's Pawtucket Water Supply Board, the teachers, the flyer, or the police, that they often kind of square the mumbles. Uh, is there any other discussion? All who's in favor, I'm sorry, uh, call, call over.
President Mer- uh, President Mercer.
Yes.
Councilor Rudolph.
Yes.
Councilor DeRosa.
Yes.
Councilor Greger.
Yes.
Councilor Shu.
Yes.
Councilor Kobyak.
Yes.
Councilor Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilor Wildery.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Thanks for being here, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilor, President Mercer, I just had one, uh, there's also an item related to the contract, item number fourteen. I'm not asking to move it, if you had any questions on it, it's, or amendment to the pay plan, which is part of the union contract.
No, I, I don't think that's, that should be an issue.
Yeah.
That's just, that's a language thing to clear it up.
Yeah.
What, what's been negotiated, so...
So I just wanna make sure you didn't have any questions for us on that.
You guys are fine.
Okay.
Councilor Wildery, would you prefer to amend the agenda or take it up now?
If you, if you want, we'll get turned over.
The move by Councilor Wildery, seconded by Councilor Shu, that we amend the agenda for the purpose of taking up item fourteen out of four. Is there any discussion on that, on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen.
The Finance Committee returns the following ordinance with the recommendation for approval. An ordinance repealing and replacing scheduled pay rates for local two fifty-one in the section eighty-eight dash twelve, under code of waters in the city of Pawtucket, nineteen ninety-six, Teamsters, for first passage, I call for approval on roll called book.
Same.
The move by Councilor, seconded by Councilor Rudolph, that an ordinance repealing and replacing scheduled pay rates for local two fifty-one, section, section eighty-eight dash twenty, dash twelve, under code of waters in the city of Pawtucket, nineteen ninety-six, regarding the Teamsters. Uh, the move, the motion is for first passage on a roll called book. Any discussion? Any questions?
No, just cut my reading down.
Turn to Keel. Okay, you're not, Angel, uh, um, call, call over.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Councilor Rudolph.
Yes.
Councilor DeRosa.
Yes.
Councilor Greger.
Yes.
Councilor Shu.
Yes.
Councilor Kobyak.
Yes.
Councilor Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilor Wildery.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Thank, thank you, thank you for taking that.
Good night. Before I take number three?
Uh...
I don't know if somebody's got A, I've got F, so is, I'll wait for it.
Councilor Rudolph, you got A through D on your three, A, E, C.
I think you, are you telling me about...
Number three.
I have three on page two.
Oh, number three.
Number three.
Here we go.
Uh, so three A.
Three A. So I wanted, I know that, um, Councilor Greger has brought Collier Park in here, being the dog park, right? And I don't know where that, um, has gone. Um, but, uh, Collier Park really needs some attention, that, um, community there needs some attention. I would like to send a communication to, um, Tina, to DPW, to planning, um, to ask them to pay attention more in that area, um, if they can come up with ways and ideas to beautify the park and to consider fencing around the park. Um, I say that for two reasons. One, I seen across the street of the property that's owned by Blue Forests, where they were painting the black fence, little short, small fence. Um, it really made a difference in that, um, area. Um, and if not something similar to that, um, like at Payne Park, uh, when the parks closed, if the kids or people are behind the fence, they know, you know, the, the park is closed, they're not supposed to be behind the fence. I go there at night a lot and I see a lot of officers having to come and, and, and kick people out of the park, off of the bench, um, um, and in this communication, I don't know. Um, but I, I send an email to Ripton, there's like a customer service line there, um, to talk about that bus stop and, um, its potential, you know, safety concerns and how they can help us if even it might need to get moved or it might not. Um, but, um, that's definitely an area that is getting a lot of traffic with crime and drugs. And I think the more that we, you know, um, get the city to have some, like Payne Park used to be a dead zone. It's not a dead zone anymore because we used it, um, because we made investments there and, and crime has decreased in, in that, in that community. So I would like to see that same energy, so if we can simplify it, um...
Can I just ask you one quick question? Item B is somewhat simple in saying...
Same thing, but see, Moore Park is not experiencing crime, but it's just a patch of grass and trees.
Do you want, another question, do you want to do both of those?
Yeah.
In the same way, be the rest, yes, or this, or this?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Do you like taking care of what it means?
Yeah, I'm not looking for a fence around Moore Park, maybe, or I don't know, that might...
Yeah, I asked, is that the one that's like High Washington Street?
Yeah, the little triangle.
That little triangle, yeah.
Yeah. Um, a lot of kids are playing here, um, they had to like take some tree branches out and stuff. I don't know if there could be like trash, uh, a pooper scooper for the dogs or, um, so a bench or something, but I just feel like it's just a patch of grass and if, if we...
If collectively they would address both of those parts. Okay, and, Councilor, that's...
I agree, this, nothing, Moore Park is grass, there's nothing there, we could have some flowers, some shrubs, to make it look nice.
It's our only green space. Seriously, it's our green space and people go there and sit under the trees. I'm not being funny, this is our green space and so if we're looking for green space, please take care of it for a second. Especially with the lobs now, a lot of people are using that triangle, whatever they need.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
And we also have them send their response to the Parks Commission. They need monthly.
Yes.
And that's really their priority.
Yeah.
And then maybe ultimately, especially since we're coming for the, the end of summer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, maybe over the course of the winter, the Parks Commission can come up with some paths forward, send it to us and then we can deal with it, spread it perhaps in our recreation.
Okay.
Is that... So...
Yes.
So the letter would be, the, the motion is to send a letter to the Police Department, Director of P, DPW, and the Director of Planning, asking for them to consider all ways of rehabbing and, uh, improving both Collier Park and Moore Park relative to fencing, fencing and beautification. Um, and for them to copy the response, not only to us, but to the Parks Commission chair. Is that accomplish, what you'd like to accomplish?
Yes.
Are you with that, Councilor Greger?
Yeah, I mean, that's inclusive of the city's part of recreation, only department as well.
I want to be sure we send this to the administration.
We, we have a Parks Commission, that is part of it. So, if, if, my thought was, if this letter, we get the response, but it also, we don't have to wait and then send it after our next meeting to, if they send it directly to, to, uh, the Public, uh, to us. Parks Commission would probably request that the Parks Commission, uh, take it under consideration, see what they can come up with.
Yeah, it's really what, what they're in place for. Yeah, you know, I said, I said, we need to see, see the letter to the, uh, Director of Parks and Rec as well.
Yeah, so he, he sits on that board too, so.
Oh, he does, okay, alright.
Actually, yeah, John Blaze.
Yes.
So, everybody good with that? I'll, I'll, I'll do it there, so, so Rick, motion is to send a letter to the chief, the Directors of Public Works and Planning, asking them to consider all ways of improving both Moore Park and Collier Park, uh, specifically with a, a, an eye toward perhaps fencing, um, in some manner, Collier Park. And that the response be given to us by the next meeting and also copied to the Director of, uh, Parks and Rec and the, uh, Parks Commission, with the hope that the Parks Commission could undertake that and then give us a, uh, a path to. Is there any discussion about that motion? All in favor of sending a communication?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that brings us to C, that is also you, Councilor Rudolph, three C?
Yes, the American Rescue Plan money, there was a survey, I've seen that we spent about two million in the, um, in our general, in our budget. Um, can the administration please give us an update on that? Uh, how much they spent, where they spent it, what's happening? Are we privy to that information? Do we, uh, get to say where it's going, where it's not going, um...
We'll ask all those questions. And so the motion is, motion by Councilor DeRosa, seconded by Councilor Rudolph, is that, and Councilor Shu, that we send a letter to the administration, asking them to give us, the Council, an update on upper monies, upper funds, uh, where we are, where we stand, how we spend it, how we plan to spend it, and, uh, the recommendation of, of the Council.
I agree with that.
I, I, this is on the...
On this one, yeah.
Communication, yeah.
Um, while I appreciate us asking that, I, I think we've asked that before and I would really like a member of the administration to come and answer our questions in person at some point. I can look back at the specific dockets that those letters were on. I'm really tired of the back and forth at this point, um, and I would really like a conversation about this rather than back and forth communication. I don't, I don't have a recommendation on when that occurs, but I would like it scheduled and I would like whoever the administration thinks would be the best representatives to be present.
So I think we have kind of a full agenda on the twenty-first, would you like to make that motion?
For the, the following meeting?
First meeting of October?
I'd be good with that if, if it would.
Yeah.
That work for you, as a manager, your question?
Yeah. Um, so I see, uh, towns like the Council have been making recommendations, been doing different things with their Amer- with American Rescue Plan money and, I mean, I don't know about, I can attest to the other councils, but, and nobody has asked, um, our opinion on where that fund should go. And, um, so I, I wanna know, like, uh, like who gives, like where, like, do we, is that not our jurisdiction? Is that something that does not fall under the Council? And also when they're saying that they're working closely with the Council, hmm, I don't know.
Right, so we can ask all those questions in the first meeting if needed?
You can say that, okay, I mean...
Yes.
Okay, uh, in which case, if the move by Councilor DeRosa, seconded by Councilor Shu, that a letter be sent to the administration requesting that a member of the administration appear before the Council on the first meeting of October to, uh, give us an update in person on, uh, plans for our...
I think we'll be results of the survey, if the, if they're gonna...
Including the results of the survey. Any further discussion on that, Matt? All in favor of sending that communication?
Aye.
Opposed? Dee is also you, Councilor DeRosa.
Um, again, so Friday, Saturday nights, I'm upstairs, we're sending the baby, with the baby, my mom. Um, and I can hear speeding, um, I've seen a lot of speeding going down West Ave, Pawtucket Ave. Um, and also that intersection of Payne Park and Moore Street. Um, so I, one would like to ask them to put that speeding, where it tells you, your foot trailer on West Ave somewhere. Um, I've been having people blowing through the Payne Park stop sign and I'm really afraid somebody's gonna get hurt over there, not only there, but over by the West Ave Fire Station, where they're coming from ten rocks to the fire station, they're just flying across.
So where would you, where are on West Ave for, maybe, like, a lot of...
Well, if I may, where are you speeding, speeding, like, when they come up to that, uh, that stop sign over on West Ave, over at Randall? There's a stop, so for them to gear up speed, where are they gearing up that speed? They're gonna go up now to the end of Payne Park, we're gonna have the stop sign, right? So are you looking at them coming from the North Main Street side, coming towards Payne Park? If they're gearing up that speed, right, where...
Yes, I know from, you know, ten rocks down.
Is that what you're seeing?
Yes, I've seen people fly through the stop sign to stop at the, the community center, the stop sign.
Yeah, that, they're moving through that?
They're moving through that, so they're getting through West Ave by the fire station and, and coming across.
Cause a long stretch, you, you get till to the fire.
Yeah, from ten miles.
You're suggesting south of the fire station?
Yeah, like maybe around South Delhi.
How about like around Bowwell?
Yeah, maybe around Bowwell, yeah, that's where all the kids are at. Bowwell and, and I know right around there, we have that.
And the block between Bowwell and, and on West Ave?
Yes. Um, but, um, since we were talking about, uh, Moore, Moore, Moore Park, um, I don't know if they can put like crosswalks for the people there, or that intersection, um, huh?
I'm going to Bowwell.
No, you're not, Bowwell, no, you're right.
That's, that's from the red light, that's, that's, uh, uh, what you're saying.
At the West Ave Fire Station.
So they're going with the speed light, that's what you're getting into?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Um, so that intersection where you come down Payne Park and you go into the lobs there and then it's the Moore Park, um, it tends to be a little confusing, uh, some of the lines are out. Um, people are parking directly in front of the lot. I don't know that that is the safest thing when we're taking that left there.
Can we deal with the speeding with the correspondence first? And if that...
Yep, go ahead.
We're talking about now, we're going to keep, uh, traffic, so...
Alright.
Uh, Councilor Greger.
I was gonna talk about that, but I did, uh, there is no stop sign, uh, right by Jefferson and Moore Street coming to that park also, if you're going on a rant, uh, I have called some residents saying, you know, this is, this is an apartment here and there's no stop sign, if you're coming in from, yeah, from Moore Park and you're going to Jefferson, there's no stop sign there. There's no stop sign when you're coming in from Randall and you gotta crossover to wait before the, uh, the little condo thing.
So does, does that have to do with where we're going to, to travel?
No, that's to do with a traffic study over here to make that area safer, to be, to, to...
You know, that's something, as a district council, you can probably reach out to traffic and ask them to, to look at that matter and then go to list, mandate it in the meeting.
Well, no, I had brought it up and we agreed that I could bring it up at first meeting since this was what I heard.
Alright, Cal, Councilor Kobyak, you have something on, on this, in the motion?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, I do a lot of obviously speeding right now in my district and so I've had the speed trailers there, I know there is like a list of areas that they have, like, um, a pending list, like next week's here, next week's that, so I'm just, you know, I'm trying to get it right away or impatient or I would just say add that to the communication if it's urgent, um, because there is an ongoing list of different streets that they are assigned to, because it's only two trailers for the whole city.
Cause, cause frequently, a, a district council person might call saying, put the, put it on...
Yeah.
The next stop on... Okay, so it's been moved by Councilor Rose, second by Councilor, uh, Councilor Greger, that a communication be sent to the police department asking that the speed trailer be placed on West Ave, uh,
Between Bowwell and?
For, for northbound traffic between Bowwell and Donald, and that it be put out there as soon as possible, and, uh, that the council be given the, it's a seven day report, the council will be giving the report that's generated from. Any discussion on that, Rick? All in favor?
Aye.
And then, if I can paraphrase, the correspondence to the traffic, the DBW traffic engineer about what can be done for crosswalks and other safety matters around Moore Park?
Yes.
And, uh, Payne Park?
Payne Park, yeah, yeah, cause it constantly.
And?
Stop sign, there's no stop sign.
Just one time, I'll make sure that, that's clear. Okay, so, we're talking about?
I want them to go there and figure out how to make it safer, whether it's a stop sign, a line, a crosswalk, or a?
Traffic safety, traffic safety study of those, that triennial area.
There we go.
And Councilor?
Well, I was gonna say, so I, I'm dealing with all the same stuff, so I wanna give you guys my ins- in- insight and, um, support. Um, so I know crosswalks, when we do the, the traffic study, um, there's certain laws about where a crosswalk can go. And then also stop signs, we'll do a traffic study to see if it's, um, conducive to, you know, cause they don't want backups, they don't want accidents, so a stop sign is very important to where it goes. Um, but DBW does have the power to have an emergency stop sign, to try it out, to see if it works or helps, so I just wanna give you guys some insight. But, again, e- epidemics happening everywhere with needing extra stop signs, with speeding and traffic, so.
They, they have to comply with that National Safety Board's guidelines, right? They certainly can do a study, you can determine if it's something that can be done. So, the, the, the motion is to send a correspondence to DBW, specifically the traffic engineer, and ask you had a, uh, safety study, uh, be done in the triangulating area around, around?
Randall, Jefferson.
Randall, Jefferson.
And, uh, let's see, west.
Yes. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to Councilor Greger, item three E.
Yes, uh, Mark McTerren's on Warren, and he's checking with Main Street. So, uh, apparently, um, during events across the street with the, um, uh, hard filled food and the restaurants, um, it's been brought to my attention that, I guess, there used to be a sign and a line right, uh, if you're heading, I guess, south on Warren, and you're gonna be crossing over Main Street to the right. Uh, there's no lines, uh, preventing people from parking close to the intersection, there's also, uh, also the sign, it's rusted or something, I couldn't even see it.
No parking sign?
Yes, like no parking sign, or, uh, you know, no parking at the curb, and that kind of stuff.
And, Jennifer, like, as the record said, it's mainly happening when they have an event or, that, that, and, and, and they turn the corner from Main Street coming out of Warren, uh, even trying to negotiate, you know, getting off of Warren and turning onto Main, um, you know, the parkway to the edge, because of, you know, the parking lot's kinda small, so, just something that maybe enforcement can do, more sign.
Yeah, that's really the enforcement, it doesn't matter whether the sign is there or not, the, the ordinance talks about how far away from a crosswalk, and how far away in the corner you are allowed to park. So, whether the sign or not, the ordinance says you can't do that.
No, I was saying, it's, I think it's a deterrent for, like, the city, a sign is really, most certainly not.
Yeah, uh, in that case, it's been moved by Councilor Greger, second by Councilor Stokoe, that a letter, also be sent to the traffic department, asking that they look at the, uh, area around the corner of?
Warren and Main Street.
Warren and Main Street, regarding replacing faded out signs and any striping that might be faded out as well. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item three F, Councilor Wilton Hane.
Um, before I take item F, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. Um, I got a communication here from Sarah Miranda, Human Resources Coordinator of the Alamo Members of the Pawtucket City Council requesting a pay plan amendment and delete the library page and library senior page and add a library aid. It's in, um, we wanna vote on the amendment first, and I'll tell you what.
So, then move by Councilor, uh, Wilton Hane, second by Councilor Stokoe, that we amend the agenda, allow Councilor Greger to, uh, a correspondence and, uh, so, do, what is the correspondence? Any discussion on that, any of that? All in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, the correspondence, it's, it's an ordinance repealing and replacing the scheduled pay rates for our local ten twelve eighty eight dash twelve, the code of audits in the city of Pawtucket, nineteen ninety six, deleting library page and library senior page and adding library aid. It's in, um, we wanna vote on the amendment first, and I'll tell you what.
So, then move by Councilor, uh, Wilton Hane, second by Councilor Stokoe, that we amend the agenda, allow Councilor Greger to, uh, a correspondence and, uh, so, do, what is the correspondence? Any discussion on that, any of that? All in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, the correspondence, it's, it's an ordinance repealing and replacing the scheduled pay rates for our local ten twelve eighty eight dash twelve, the code of audits in the city of Pawtucket, nineteen ninety six, deleting library page and library senior page and adding library aid. I'd like to, uh, make a motion to file these in items in refer to finance.
Then move by Councilor, Wilton Hane, second by Councilor Stokoe, that the, the communication from, uh, Sarah Miranda, Human Resources Coordinator, regarding repealing and replacing the pay schedules for the library, uh, we filed it, referred to the finance, made discussion on the filing and referral. All in favor?
Aye.
Item F is, uh, questions about the, uh, role and input of the new school building, um, construction. I've gone over it, and as my colleague has over there mentioned, that, you know, we, we've got a new state of the art building. There was a, um, a committee that helped with that building also, but there was also, there's also a commission on a new central high school. There was a, a committee made up of council members and, and city leaders and school officials, uh, to determine whether it was in the best interest and whether or not we put it on for a bond. So, my concern, and I've been part of other, other, let's see, we've negotiated sales of school properties that fall under the, under the cities, because schools are allowed to own property, so they've asked for a representative of the council to be involved in the negotiations. Uh, Councilor, uh, Techo was in the past, I've, myself, but I think with the amount of money that we're spending on a new central high school, and if it gets put on the bond, and if the taxpayers, um, approve it, then I think there should be a representative, uh, from the council that's on that building committee, uh, to, to make sure that these type of things don't happen. I agree with the council, it's great to say that these things are happening, and, and we're all working together to make sure they happen, but if certain people aren't communicating to make sure that we all know that this is happening, it's, and that's my only point, is the point of communication here. I'm a member of the purchasing board from the city council, so I know what goes on when, when it comes to purchasing stuff from the city, and half the time I'll bring it back. If I think it's something that should be related back here when it comes to changes, I'll bring it back here. So, I believe that we should do the same thing, uh, when it comes to new construction of a building, so that we make sure that, uh, the taxpayers are protected with the investment that they wanna make. And, uh, I just believe that's just the way we should, hey, that, uh, so I, I don't know if it's, if it's a, a, a letter that should be sent to the school department, asking that, or, you know, whether it's, uh, the council president, uh, turns around and appoints somebody to be a representative from the council to, uh, sit in on those things. I'm, I'm not saying particularly that we run these things, I'm saying that we're, we're there in observance, we're there to put input in, and we're also there to communicate that back to our colleagues, rather than us all just sitting and waiting for them to open up a new central high school, and then find out what it's like once we get there.
So, it's like, I may, I, I ask it just like we put on, because of what happened, uh, last week with the delay, and the fact that we've got, and Councilor, uh, Greger's district, we've got a tear down, a complete rebuild going on, sometime every soon, I mean, within days almost. And we're putting a three hundred million dollar bond question, uh, up to three hundred million dollars on, on the ballot. Uh, I think we owe it to the taxpayers to understand that the city sits, the city side sits willing to help. The, Councilor Rougeau is always telling me about care and control, since the, the school committee does have complete care and control of the buildings, you know, they don't own them. Nobody's saying that, nobody's saying we, we wanna wholly in on that. It's simply more of an olive branch, and, you know, Councilor Rose ruled it to, to, you know, instead of finger pointing and all the rest, you know, I, I think we just, I would like to send a letter, and, and motion afterwards, just offering the city's cooperation, moving forward, so that the taxpayers have a good sense that, oh, and it's gonna be done well and correctly. And if they approve bond of the high school, it's going to be done well, correctly, and we stand ready to help them, anyway. Councilor Shu?
Yes, I completely agree with Councilor Wilton Hane and, uh, Councilor Mercer on this. Um, it's no secret that I was really frustrated, uh, the night that I went to the emergency meeting. Um, I think the school committee, particularly the folks on the facilities committee, have done a tremendous job trying to, to get the information out there to the public about what occurred. Um, because it's important that parents, faculty, staff know that their building is safe and that all protocols have been solved. And I think they did a tremendous job at assuring the public, when the school opened, that all the eyes were gathered and the teams were crossed. I completely agree, but I think this council can serve an effective role as a communication, uh, mechanism, uh, if we attend these meetings or have some channel into it, so that we can assist in the communication efforts around our districts. Um, I think this was just, uh, it was a good learning experience to kind of be on the outside of this looking in, but I would agree that in the future, for any complete buildups, the council will have, um, the stake in it, because we are, we all have stake in it. And it's not to say that folks in their positions aren't doing the best work that they can, cause they absolutely are. Uh, but I agree in that the taxpayers deserve to have a voice, and we are that voice as it relates to property.
So, Councilor?
Right, so, yeah, and I appreciate what you articulated, Councilor, because they do, um, school committee elected officials, they have care and control of, uh, of the care of buildings, uh, called the Title sixteen, um, and, you know, to offer, you know, say, hey, you would like one of us to, you know, sit in at, we, we have, uh, Potter Burns, uh, I know definitely Danny Green, we had, um, a member with staff, teaching staff, you know, talking about the design and stuff. Um, but ultimately, we, their decision, so I think the, the, you know, lending, that, I would, I think it's the, in the work of collaboration, saying, yeah, okay, that, that's a, you know, a great way of putting it, because in the end, it, it's their care and control, by state law. And we, you know, we can ask, uh, what, it'll be up to them if they say yes or no, but, um, it is by state law under their care and control.
Councilor Rose?
Our name is on the building, so we do have it. It's on plaque on the building, you said first, I, I was really humbled by that plaque with our name on it. I got a picture of it from the constitution, and, um, so definitely, we are impressed, and this is not just the school committee, this is a big thing for the city, the school department, for everybody. So, I agree with your suggestion of having somebody, um, be present, you know, to, from, from the council, one of us to be present, to kind of be on, you know, at least with the communication, um, about it. So, yeah, I think that was, uh, good, especially since we, and thanks for our collaboration, we should really collaborate, right?
Councilor Greger? Yeah, and, and if I may, as, as, uh, Councilor Rougeau suggested, we did, you know, and, uh, I, I mean, you know, starting, you know, in terms of the schools and the council, so maybe we should sort of like, uh, lay as the council lays on, the, you know, request that we can just figure, receive communication from the committees, we're gonna do different things, and then at least we'll have someone, uh, to come back to rest of council or report, but I don't know if we can necessarily impose ourselves on, so.
And that's, that's the catch.
Yeah.
We, we can impose ourselves on, and we can just offer, uh, help, some expertise, or some?
Kind of collaboration.
Yeah, collaboration. So, I just think this is one break now, that we're in an historic time of school re- construction reimbursement by the state, we can get between eighty-two and ninety-two cents on the dollar back and doing this. And when we have a hiccup like we had a week or so, it could cause some, some voters to say, well, you know, you don't wanna do this with a new high school. We really wanna follow through on going to a new state, a new state of the art, uh, building, so, I think.
We do.
I know, and, 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 and so, and that's why the voters approved it already. It, when things like this happen, it can cause a little bit of a, 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 a concern in the, in the voters, and any delay is, you know, jeopardizing that, that incredible reimbursement amount, so, um, I would entertain a motion to send a letter to the superintendent and the chair of the school, simply offering, uh, any bit of collaborative help they would like, including sitting in on design meetings and anything else, uh, with the, uh, any additional screw to actually go on for this type of work. Make the motion. Is that about what we're talking about?
Well, I mean, I don't understand, I mean, I think it should be the council for the district with the constructions.
Well, the bond doesn't speci- doesn't specify.
No, that's different.
And we, and we can, if, if we can't impose it on them, we can't impose who it's going to be.
Yeah, well, no.
We can just, we can just tell them, and then if, like we do with everything else, where the president appoints, uh, Councilor Willoughby and Unpurchasing, and Councilor Rougeau on, uh, the water supply, and I was pointing to the steering committee for the, 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 the evaluation committee for the, 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 uh, the, uh, the unified high school. So, if there were going to be somebody, certainly the president would consider, uh, the person with the most constituency at stake in all of the, or, or, or Agnes Little, for example, if that were going to be rebuilt, and for junior high schools and the high schools in particular, there is no, it happens to be, the, the plan would be put in my district, but, you know, I don't have any more say or more insight than Councilor Stokoe, I could be the other side of the, of the city, so.
That's a more rule.
And, and we, we can't, when all of a sudden that we can't impose, all we can do is offer, so, um, do you have that, Rick? Any further discussion on that?
I don't think Rick's got us pretty confused.
No, Rick?
I, I have, it's offered to the city council to sit in on all meetings regarding new school construction, to offer any assistance the city can provide, provide input and report back to the city.
I, I would just say, offer any help we can, up to and including having a member, uh, sit in, if they, if they deem it.
I think Councilor Masthead lays on, but, okay.
Any further discussion on the correspondence? All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Number six, the city property committee submits the following resolution. Resolution authorizing the city of Pawtucket to enter into an easement agreement with Cape Girardian Museum exhibit to maintain a ramp on the city sidewalk at six hundred seventeen Prospect Street, to make a motion, uh, to approve on Go Call Go.
Moved by Councilor, moved by Councilor, uh, Greger and Councilor Stokoe, that a resolution will override the city of Pawtucket to enter into an easement agreement with Cape Girardian Museum exhibit to maintain the ramp on the city sidewalk at one at six seventeen Prospect Street. Any discussion on the resolution?
This is all ADA, uh, ADA compliant, uh, they're gonna have about six switches on the sidewalk, but there's plenty of sidewalk, uh, left over, so there won't be any hindrance to anybody that, uh, on these ADA compliance.
Any further discussion? Go for it.
President Mercer?
Yes.
Councilor Rougeau?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Greger?
Yes.
Councilor Shu?
Yes.
Councilor Stokoe?
Yes.
Councilor Masthead?
Yeah.
Councilor Wilton?
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Um, President Mercer, before I take off, number seven, and I have a little question. Um, I'm gonna send this email, it's more to tell you guys about it, um, I know Baldwin's on the construction, and today. Um, I know Baldwin's under construction and today I was driving by and I realized, uh, Alina DePino, the park that we need for, uh, young girls who, um, died tragically years back from Baldwin. We used to make a garden park for her. Um, I know the teachers had bought a flat stone with her name on it. Um, but, uh, when we redo the garden, um, there's a big stone in the corner that we would paint, the top, and bring stuff that becomes a rock, but every year we would be doing, we would decorate that, um, stone. So I'm gonna send an email to the administration today, actually, we sent an email, um, asking if they can find somewhere to relocate that stone, even if they relocate it in Bean Park. We spent a lot of money on that stone and I just wanna be able to continue that, um, event.
Did she go to home?
She did, yeah.
So maybe you can ask for, buy it at Baldwin, if not, then, you know, somewhere else in the district. Essentially, the power still, I think, has to lose about that.
Yeah, so, so I just wanted to, no, no, fine, you guys, I'm making that request. And, um, I have a question for the clerk's office. Do you know when we get the affirmative action plan again this year?
Um, no, I don't know. I don't know when it's, how often it's revised.
Okay.
Up here, do you know, Rick?
Um, at the next, uh, at a council meeting, can we put on the agenda, um, the hiring practices and, uh, the affirmative action for a discussion? It was just a request to the president, if he can do that.
I, I would pass that request along to Council President Brian and ask if he included in the next, uh, agenda, little one half of that.
Thank you.
Does that work for you?
Yes. Number seven is a.
If you would like.
Yes, I will. Number seven is a resolution for claiming September twenty twenty-two as childhood cancer awareness launched in the city of Pawtucket. A vote for all vote.
Moved by Council of Rouge and seconded by the entire city council. A resolution proclaiming September tw- two thousand twenty-two as childhood cancer awareness, awareness month in the city of Pawtucket. Any discussion on the resolution? All of the, I'm sorry, a vote for all vote.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Councilor Rouge.
Yes.
Councilor DeRosa.
Yes.
Councilor Gregor.
Yes.
Councilor Shu.
Yes.
Councilor Stokoby.
Yes.
Councilor Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilor Willoughby.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Uh, before we move on to item eight, uh, you may have seen the, the email from the clerk's office regarding items eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. These are all resolutions authorizing the, uh, the issuance of bonds that were approved by the voters in two thousand twenty election. So, nothing renewed here, it's just resolutions, authorizing, uh, voting, voting on, uh, bond. So, with that, I think, Councilor.
Uh, this is, resolution authorizing the city of Pawtucket to provide for construction, renovation, improvement, repair, alteration, furnishing, and equipping of public buildings in the city and authorizing the financing thereof, including the issue of not more than four million dollars in bonds, notes, and other evidences of indebtedness, therefore to fund the capital improvement program for the two fiscal years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. I move for a vote for all votes.
The move by Council should be seconded by Council of Rouge. A resolution authorizing the city to provide for construction, renovation, and improvement for repair, alteration, furnishing, and equipment of public buildings in the city and authorizing the financing thereof, including the issuance of not more than four million dollars in bonds, notes, and other evidences of indebtedness, therefore, to fund the capital improvement program for the two fiscal years of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Yes.
Yes, I'm, I'm just, uh, I just like the, it's, these funds actually be applied, be applied six more west than. Oh, no, I can follow it there in a better way.
Any other discussion on this resolution? Nightcase clerk, call roll.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Councilor Rouge.
Yes.
Councilor DeRosa.
Yes.
Councilor Gregor.
Yes.
Councilor Shu.
Yes.
Councilor Stokoby.
Yes.
Councilor Vasquez.
Yeah.
Councilor Willoughby.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Number nine, a resolution authorizing the city of Pawtucket to provide for the renovation, construction, reconstruction, and equipping of public recreation facilities in the city, including land acquisition and authorizing the financing thereof, including the issue of not more than four million dollar bonds, notes, and other evidences of, uh, indebtedness. Therefore, to fund the capital improvement program for the two fiscal years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three.
Moved by Council Stokoby, seconded by Council Shu. A resolution authorizing the city of Pawtucket to provide for renovation, construction, reconstruction, and equipment of public renovation facilities in the city, in the city, including land acquisition, authorizing the further, the financing thereof, including the issuance of not more than four million dollars in bonds, notes, and other evidences of indebtedness, therefore, to fund the capital improvement program for the two fiscal years of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, clerk, call roll.
President Mercer.
Yes, yes.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Of course. Council Rouge.
Yes.
Council DeRosa.
Yes.
Council Gregor.
Yes.
Council Shu.
Yes.
Council Stokoby.
Yes.
Council Vasquez.
Yeah.
Council Willoughby.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Number ten, a resolution authorizing the city of Pawtucket to provide for the planning, evaluation, design, construction, equipping, and reconstruction of the sanitary sewers and storm sewers in the city, and authorizing the financing thereof, including the issue of not more than one million dollar in bonds, notes, and other evidences of indebtedness, therefore to fund the capital improvement program for the two fiscal years two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three.
Moved by Council Stokoby, seconded by Council Vasquez. A resolution authorizing the city of Pawtucket to provide for planning, evaluation, design, construction, equipping, and reconstruction of the sanitary sewers and storm sewers in the city and authorizing the financing thereof, including the issues, the issue of not more than one million dollars in bonds, notes, and other evidences, evidences of indebtedness, therefore, to fund the capital improvement program for the two fiscal years of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, clerk, call roll.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Council Rouge.
Yes.
Council DeRosa.
Yes.
Council Gregor.
Yes.
Council Shu.
Yes.
Council Stokoby.
Yes.
Council Vasquez.
Yeah.
Council Willoughby.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Number eleven, a resolution authorizing the city of Pawtucket to provide for the design, construction, reconstruction, and repair of sidewalks and other transportation infrastructure improvements, including but not limited to the drainage and landscaping, and authorizing the financing thereof, including the issue of not more than one million bonds, one million dollars in bonds, notes, and other evidences of indebtedness, therefore, to fund the capital improvement program to, for the fiscal, two fiscal years of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. I call for approval on a vote for all.
Moved by Council, uh, Willoughby, seconded by Council DeRosa. A resolution authorizing the city of Pawtucket to provide for design, construction, reconstruction, and repair of sidewalks and other transportation infrastructure improvements, including, but not limited to drainage and landscaping, and authorizing the financing thereof, including the issue of not more than one million dollars in bonds, notes, and other evidences of indebtedness, therefore, to fund the capital improvement program for the two fiscal years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, clerk, call roll.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Council Rouge.
Yes.
Council DeRosa.
Yes.
Council Gregor.
Yes.
Council Shu.
Yes.
Council Stokoby.
Yes.
Council Vasquez.
Yeah.
Council Willoughby.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Item twelve, resolution authorizing the city of Pawtucket to provide for the repaving of streets in the city and all costs related thereto, and authorizing the financing thereof, including the issue of not more than three million dollar bonds, notes, and other evidences of indebtedness, therefore, to fund the capital improvement program for the two fiscal years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Motion to approve on a vote for all.
A move by Council, seconded by Council, uh, Shu, yeah, excuse me, a resolution authorizing, approval, approval be given to a resolution authorizing the city of Pawtucket to provide for the repaving of streets in the city and all costs related thereto, and authorizing the financing thereof, including the issuance, the issue of not more than three million dollars in bonds, notes, and other evid, other evidences of indebtedness, therefore, to fund the capital improvement program for the two fiscal years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, clerk, call roll. Out to you, have a question?
No, sir.
You ready to go?
Call roll, yes.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Council Rouge.
Yes.
Council DeRosa.
Yes.
Council Gregor.
Yes.
Council Shu.
Yes.
Council Stokoby.
Yes.
Council Vasquez.
Yes.
Council Willoughby.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Um, President Mercer, number thirteen, is a resolution authorizing the city of Pawtucket to provide for the improvement replacement of road safety improvements and traffic control devices in the city of Pawtucket, and authorizing the financing, therefore, thereof, including the issue of not more than one million dollars in bonds, notes, and other evidence of indebtedness, therefore, to fund the capital improvement program for the two fiscal years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three for a vote for all.
Moved by Council DeRosa, seconded by Council Vasquez, a resolution, approval be given to a resolution authorizing Pawtucket to provide for the improvement and replacement of road safety improvements and traffic control devices in the city of Pawtucket, authorizing the financing thereof, including the issue of not more than one million dollars in bonds, notes, and other evidences of indebtedness, therefore, to fund the capital improvement program for the two fiscal years of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, clerk, call roll.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Council Rouge.
Yes.
Council DeRosa.
Yes.
Council Gregor.
Yes.
Council Shu.
Yes.
Council Stokoby.
Yes.
Council Vasquez.
Yes.
Council Willoughby.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Um, before taking item fifteen, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include a communication from Tina Hammond, chief of police, to the honorable members of Pawtucket, to the council, uh, about public safety along I ninety-five.
So it's been moved by Council, uh, Vasquez, seconded by Council Shu and Council of Willoughby, uh, that we approve amending the agenda for the, for filing of communication. Any discussion on amending the agenda?
Can we add that to the next, uh, conversation? I, I mean, to our next meeting? This conversation about the publicity candidate in like another month?
I don't know.
If we could put this topic on the agenda for the city council meeting, not next one, but for the fifth, we don't want to ask for that.
Did we, we haven't amended the agenda yet. Anybody, anybody in favor of amending the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Vasquez, you'd like to introduce a letter to the file?
Uh, motion to file. Do I say it one more time? I, I didn't break it down. Okay, uh, the name of the communication from.
Yes.
From Tina Hammond, uh, chief of police, to the city council about public safety along I ninety-five.
So, the motion, a motion made by Council, uh, Vasquez, seconded by Council Rouge, communication from Tina Hammond, chief of police, honourable members of the city council, uh, we got a public safety along I ninety-five filed and put on an amendment for the October, first up meeting on October. Correspondent, first thing, that, that, Council Rose. All in favor of filing and putting on a agenda?
I.
Nice, opposed, there we go.
Okay, item fifteen, the committee on income spending suits returns the following claims for damage to the city. Uh, we are denying the filing, the money was worth it for three hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents, and we are referring it to right now. And we are also denying Michael's Florentine, uh, for a thousand two hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-eight cents, and we are referring it to Pawtucket Water Supply Board.
Moved by Council Vasquez, seconded by Council DeRosa and Council of Rouge, that two claims be denied. First being matters to what, uh, for three hundred thirty-six dollars, eighty-seven cents for a pothole, and the gun I always come with a referral to, around the water transportation, and denying a claim by Michael's Colante for one thousand two hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-eight cents regarding vehicle damage. That is denied and referred to Pawtucket Water Supply. Any discussion on the two denials? Call roll.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Council Rouge.
Yes.
Council DeRosa.
Yes.
Council Gregor.
Yes.
Council Shu.
Yes.
Council Stokoby.
Yes.
Council Vasquez. Council Willoughby.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
One more, um, so that the following, we are approving our number ten, we're giving here, three hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-five cents.
The move by, uh, Council Vasquez, seconded by Council, uh, Rouge and Council DeRosa, that two will be given to a claim of Arnold, the Kansas junior, for the amount of one hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Any discussion? A lot of proof in that claim. Call roll.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Council Rouge.
Yes.
Council DeRosa.
Yes.
Council Gregor.
Yes.
Council Shu.
Yes.
Council Stokoby.
Yes.
Council Vasquez.
Yes.
Council Willoughby.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
While we adjourn, uh, Council Rose.
Um, this time, two years ago, we were all preparing for, um, election day. Um, so I'm gonna wish you guys some luck on Tuesday, wholeheartedly, everybody here. Um, but, uh, two years ago, I lost a family member, um, a, somebody that I considered my sister, a mother of four, who, uh, struggled with addiction and unfortunately lost her life. Um, I just wanna take this time to encourage all of you as official councilors and as the atlet's councilors, presidents, the proctals, to, um, find these, to work with agencies in the community, and the police, and our public safety director, um, to take this horrible drug off of our streets, um, fentanyl, which is killing people from babies to, you know, adults. Um, it was a very tough loss for me and the reason why I am very, very, very loud about substance use prevention, and I have a disdain for, um, fentanyl, um, and it being dealt here in the city. And we're affected by it in every single district, everywhere in the city. So, the more we apply pressure, um, and more we attempt to work with people and say loud about this really serious public safety concern, hopefully the better things will get. I'm not the only person who has suffered, suffered a loss, um, to this, so, my condolences to everybody who's ever felt anything. And I just wanted to end today in Tanya Jiba's memory, um, and, uh, wanted to take a second and let the kids know that they'll, they'll always have my support for, for the rest of their lives. Um, and it, it means something for her to come from here, um, because she was not just my family, she was one of my number one fans and, uh, walked with me, um, and was there for each accomplishment and of the many of the primaries, um, she has had. So, it was a difficult day for us all, um, but I think she's been up there late, uh, for me and, like, she part of these lives for the day. So, thank you, and I just, um, hopefully, Tanya Jiba, G.I.B.A.
Real quick, just to chime in for Tanya, um, I'll never forget that day because you called me in the middle of the day and I came to your house and sat with you in your driveway and then rocked Kamaria for a while.
I can't even remember that.
I know, you, and you still got out there and pushed with the people that supported you, just like I think everyone on this council will because we know this is something that impacts all of us. Tanya wasn't my family, but she became my family that day, and I think you became my family that day. Um, and I think also, this is even tougher in general, it's that incredible work, um, to curb this crisis and will continue to do so because of people like you and people like us who take this really seriously.
Moved by Council DeRosa, seconded by Council Shu, in the title of Pawtucket City Council. I would adjourn in the memory of Tanya Jiba, uh, who also, like, two years ago, around this time, it was two year anniversary, she's dearly, a dear friend of, of Council Rose's and, uh, dearly missed.
Thank you.